All right, I'll call this meeting to order. This is the, well, I guess it's Nottingham Planning Board meeting, but it's a joint board meeting with the zoning board and the Conservation Commission. And let's just go around the room and just have people introduce themselves for the audience. So, go ahead, Kevin.
Kevin Bassett, zoning board, Altona.
Charlie Shippley Rice, zoning board and Conservation Commission, Altona.
Edward Veal.
Gary Anderson.
Dirk Rotenheis, planning board.
Romeo Denae, ZBA.
Oh, Terry Bonzer, chairman of the ZBA.
Blair Hean, I'm the superintendent planner with the Scottville Regional Planning Commission.
Sam DeMara, Chair of the Conservation Commission.
Susan Mooney, Planning Board, Conservation Commission.
Great, thank you. Appreciate everybody being here on kind of an off day, but we have some zoning amendments, and as a part of that process, we like to hold a joint meeting to go over what the planning board has felt are necessary, or at least things that have come up through applications and need for more clarity in the zoning regulations, and some things that we're seeing on the planning side, but would also like to get the input from the ZBA and Conservation Commission of things that they may be seeing in their zoning that may need to be updated, revised, So, that's really the reason for this, and we have a couple of items that we've listed out. We should have at least a brief agenda of the items that we've, as a planning board, have pushed forward to kind of talk about at this meeting. Also included in some of the package material is the timeframe, the SB 2 March Town Meeting. In order to meet any zoning amendments for that, there are certain dates that we need to be hitting. We're on that schedule, so we're okay with what's, you know, the planning sense we're in right now in October. Monday would be, no, Monday, in November, November 8th would be kind of the first day of petitioning zoning amendments. And then we go through a public hearing process, and that would be in January, and then we would get into, or are they in February? Nope. Public hearings are in January, and in February we get listed on as the zoning amendments, and then March they get into the vote. So, tonight, I don't know if Ed, if you had any other things or anybody else would like to speak before we kind of jump into...
Yeah, I think you nailed most of it. So, history is, we try to always hold a joint meeting with the ZBA every year, at least once a year. We can always hold more, but it's always good practice to get input from the side that hears most of the cases to see what you're running into, to see if there's any way we can either, you know, find ways to make that better or not, or if there should be. And then we also take the input from town departments, officials, building inspector, fire chief, police chief, road agent, as they come in with things that they kind of run into, or they would like to see possibly, you know, amended. And then lastly, we go from the master plan. Obviously, we still have action items out of that that kind of identified some things long-term to go over. We've dealt with some of those things up, and we still have a list. So each year, we kind of get into this where we, I think we always feel like there's more time, and then get into it where, you know, we get down, we get pretty busy with cases, and case load has not slowed down one bit, so. Housekeeping is just that, just what it is. We just keep it on the list so we don't forget it, so that when we do an amendment, we can make sure to get, like, small items corrected. And then after that, it's items that we feel have been brought up to us multiple times that we should get to, like building height. And others are that we've had kind of items, and we didn't want to put them forward because of different reasons. A lot of it was due to how many changes might be going through on a ballot at once. We don't want to overwhelm the public with, you know, 10 things, even if they're all minor and corrections, so we try to limit how many we put through in any given year.
So, yeah, I think the housekeeping, I'll just go down one by one, unless there's anyone else, you know, if you have anything from the ZBA that you want to bring forward at this point.
Yep, we agree.
Okay. And I think we'll run through these and then maybe list some things. If you guys have any items, as Ed said, we have kind of polled the building inspector on items that he's been seeing, some confusion on when he's out in the field, the fire department and police department, and any of the other departments. So this has kind of boiled down into this list. The housekeeping items are just grammatical corrections throughout. Not going to need to go through those. So, the building height in section, Article 2, Section C4. It's actually 6. So currently, we have a single item. It's Item 6, 4. The building height, maximum building height shall be 34 feet measured from grade. We've gotten some feedback that it's confusing of what grade means and the definition of grade. Is it the lowest point on a house or a building? Is it the median point? So, right now, we're looking for some guidance, and we have found some guidance from other towns saying that the average elevation, and you'll have to remind me where we kind of landed with the recommendation. Is it just the average?
Yeah, so we're pulling some of the language from a couple of other towns. So we always try to, when we look at these, we try not to reinvent the wheel if someone else has already done the work, basically, because they usually have had, go through a legal process and tested. And also, we don't want to necessarily be an outlier from other towns. It's easier to kind of incorporate other towns' information that way when a developer or builder is coming through to an area, you know, they're, what they're doing in Nottingham, and our definition of height is similar to, you know, the next town, the next town, the next town, instead of having this unique thing. So we do that whenever it's, whenever possible. So, Mr. McKinnon, who's not here tonight, had mentioned two recent towns, Conway, New Hampshire, and Portsmouth, New Hampshire, have pretty decent language with that. And Portsmouth has diagrams, so we'd probably look at something like that where, you know, words are great, a picture kind of sometimes is more helpful for people to understand, understand that.
Question?
Yeah.
What's the magic of 34 feet?
My understanding, it mostly goes to certain codes, but also the fire protection. So, our tallest ladders that we have now on our fire trucks and such basically work at 34 feet. They have, I think they're 40-foot ladders, the way they have to be set back from the building and such, be properly set up for firefighters, because I'm the 34.
Yeah, I don't think any barn in the area would pass.
See, that's what we're, that's what we're finding, is that some of the homes that, at least this is from feedback from the building inspector, is that if we take the literal of the lowest point along a foundation, many of the homes that are being built do not meet that requirement. So they would have to go in for a variance, and it's not something that we want to, you know, push every building that's over 34 feet to a variance. It's not something I think we've even...
We concur.
Why do they not?
Yeah, I don't think that we, it's not happening now, and, you know, if the, what we're looking at is if there's an average of the 34 or 35 feet, at least where they can get to a roof line, is the point of kind of this revision or definition of where the grade point would be.
What is the, has the fire chief put any input?
Yeah, we do have input from the fire chief. He, and that's one of the areas that did come in, is that the 35 feet, so no building height should exceed 35 feet to, this is the, to the gable, to the roof line, to the eve height.
The ridge.
Sorry.
The top, the ridge.
The ridge or the...
If a roof is like this, the ridge is right up here.
From the lowest point finished grade to the highest point of the structure, not including chimneys, vents, and solar panels.
Okay, the highest point would be the ridge, right?
The ridge, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Are you looking at the zoning ordinance, March 2020? May I ask?
2021.
Okay. I don't have the latest. That's why I'm not reading what you're reading.
Yeah, it's, it's Item C, actually, C6. So Article 2, C residential.
C6.
So, under C6, it's not written on the agenda correctly. It should be C6.
Just a...
This, the 2021 has it as building height maximum, building height shall be 34 feet measured grade. Again, it doesn't say to the ridge, it doesn't say any of that, just from grade.
Yes, we're not looking to reinvent anything necessarily with this. It's to try to make it clear for the building inspector and applicants, you know, as to how they're being measured, so that they understand when they're coming forward with plans, you know, how that's going to be measured. In different places, do it differently. It could be lowest point around the structure, so if you're on a slope, you know, you're going to go to the lowest side, or that's where the average grade comes in on others, or a certain distance away from the, from the thing, or again, you get, you can get into it where maybe the driveway access is this side, but this side is the slope side, so, you know, theoretically, if the fire department's going to get there, that's probably the side they access, but that happens to be the highest side, and it might be over 34 feet versus, you know, if it's built into a hill, the back is easier to get to. There's no access to it.
Question, please. The 34 feet is the maximum determined by the fire department, correct?
It's actually 35.
Okay, it's actually 35.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's determined by the fire department what they can do. Is that the only variable that's determining how high you want to go?
Currently, yeah. That's the only thing that's limiting any height of roof in our, in our ordinance.
And I think most towns that don't have hydrants, pressurized hydrants, I think most towns, you'll find that a common, be a common number. So cities, you know, cities that have pressurized hydrants everywhere, they have a different, and obviously, they have ladder trucks and such like that. They have, that's when you're starting to see higher building heights.
So if the fire department should get something that goes more than 35 feet, then we would raise the maximum height of a building to be consistent with whatever the fire department can reach? Is that a determining factor?
I don't know, because again, unless we had pressurized hydrants in town too, that's the, the ladder and the pressurized water are probably your two limiting factors.
Well, currently, the tallest ladder has a...
Right, and the tallest ladder could reach 40 feet.
Right, we have no ladder truck.
Right, but if we did say 40 feet, then we would say buildings could go to 40 feet, and if it went to 45 feet, we could say 45. Is that, is that how our making decisions is based on whatever the fire company can do? No other variables are considered?
No, no higher than, you know, this, yeah, we want to stay under that threshold of what their highest recommendation is.
But it's strictly fire safety, yes.
Go ahead.
So the major difference between C and D, one points to 6 feet away from the foundation, one points to at the foundation. Is that how I read it? And the one that points 6 feet from the foundation makes sense, because the ladder has to be 6 feet from, 35 feet has to be at an angle.
Right.
Is that, is that the consensus of, of the wording?
Yep.
So I believe the chief is looking at this from the point of, okay, so you can have a 34-foot-high building, and, but the grade can drop off, and generally would drop off versus climbing, but it could climb as well.
I assume 6, 6 foot is where they're going to put their ladder anyways, right?
Yeah, yep. Go ahead, Blair, sir.
Yes, I just wanted to put a couple things out there. It, I'm going through it, it looks like there's a building height for each of the zoning districts, if not just the residential district. In, so that's one thing. And then, in, for example, I'm looking at the town center district, I think it's also the commercial. It says the maximum height, building height is 34 feet, but then it also goes on to say that structure height's above 34 feet, meaning allowed by special extension from the board adjustment, and then a few conditions are existing. So, this change should be considered in those two contexts. One, that there's heights, there's maximum heights for each of the zoning districts, and in a couple of them, it looks like there's allowance for going above that. I know that this conversation's about where do we measure it from, but I think they obviously all cut into each other. Just one different aspect.
And I think the other piece too, to answer kind of maybe your question too, is what else determines like the height? So when you look through our ordinances and such, there's, you know, you'll see kind of common language in there about the character of the neighborhoods and such. So if you change the number drastically up, you can then potentially change the character of the neighborhood. So it's usually within the zoning and the subdivision regs, there's a effort to try to have things look, you know, similar for the town. The rural character you see over and over and over again, so it's trying to maintain that. So, like Mr. Denae pointed out, like a barn might be one of those things where, yes, those commonly would be, and that fits the rural character, whereas a three or four-story house probably would not.
Thank you. You said it much better than I did.
A question once again, if I might. 34 feet because of having a 40-foot ladder. Jeez, what do they do in Manchester or Boston when they have high rises? I'm sure none of the fire department ladders reach all the way to the top floor of some of those condos.
Ladder truck.
Yeah, they have usually internal...
Ladder what?
Truck.
Ladder trucks.
With ladders on the truck.
They're not going to, they're not going to reach above, I don't know, what's the, what's the definition of skyscraper? Anything above six stories, I believe?
Well, they have internal sprinkler systems.
Okay. I think we're inventing rules.
So I don't think we were trying to change the height, and maybe that's a misperception on this. I think it was trying to define the way...
Where the height's measured from.
Yes, yeah, so when this came up from, from the fire chief and from the building inspector, it was never about the actual height that we, that was set. It was always about how, how is it defined? Because right now, it just says grade or grade plane, but we don't define those terms.
I understand what you're saying. Last night, we heard a situation for, in ZBA for a hail on, what was the address, 54?
Oh, yeah, Shore.
Shore Drive. And he's going to tear down the existing house and build a new home. Well, the low point, I understand that Shore Drive slopes down to the lake. The low point of that house would be, I guess it's, it's accessible from a hand-carried I think we're, I think we're creating rules that might make it very difficult for some people to build. Now, I read an article recently about a law that's being considered allowing people that are wanting to build that incur excessive regulations to turn around and sue the town because there are too many regulations, because it dampens the ability of building housing that does not cost so much more because of the excessive number of regulations. Okay, you could say I'm a kind of a, fewer regulations is better, and I don't know why we need to have a 34-foot maximum height, I'm just saying that.
Romeo, I have a question. That, that house on the lake though, would they, would, I mean, the fire department would not be going around to the low side of that house?
But, but according to the definition, you, he couldn't build it, because the low side is...
Well, if you do the average, then that's different, but if you do the low side, but...
But it says the lowest side.
These are suggested wordings, they're not the definitive wordings.
Okay. Once again, I'll just, I've said my piece, I'm just saying that.
Well, right now, it doesn't say anything but a height, so the building inspector could go out and not provide a permit for somebody that if it's above the 34 feet, and in his mind, it might be from 34 feet from the lowest point on the far side where maybe the ladder can't get to, even if you walked it there. But by the definition that we have, it would not be permissible. So we're trying to make a permissible, realistic amendment to what we have currently, just to, so he doesn't have, so he has some teeth to bite into when it comes into providing a permit. Because somebody could just say, well, it's 35, 38 feet on that side, why did you give him a permit? It's 38 feet on my side, you're not going to give me a permit. So we're just trying to clarify language. I don't think we're adding anything. I don't think we're even, I wouldn't, we didn't even talk about entertaining a higher threshold. I think the fire chief had a 35, and we had a 34, so we weren't planning on changing the height, just the, how it's defined. Otherwise, you know, everybody's going to be going back to the ZBA for...
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
If it was me, I guess the way, because I know we need a path forward on this, and it's been before us for a couple, two, couple years now, it was, you know, my suggestion would be that we pull some of these other towns' language, you know, and if there's one that has diagrams, it makes it easy, and we get that to the building inspector and the fire chief and ask for their input, maybe they can kind of come before. Because again, what we ideally would like is some kind of definition that makes it clear for the board, but most of the time, this is going to come up, it's going to be for applicants, you know, as they're going to pull a permit. And, you know, we've been pretty lucky to have a, the current building inspector for a few years now, but we want that continuity that, you know, he's interpreting it this way. If he leaves and we get another one, then they interpret it as the lowest point, and they're measuring from that, and they're denying all these applications and permits, you know, it causes a problem for, for people, so I think we just want to make sure we get something that's clear for everybody, so that it kind of gets, gets rid of that gray area.
I'd be interested to know if either the building inspector or the fire chief looked at sprinklers as a possible exception or not, just something to maybe ask them.
I would think, and I would think, need your reaction to that would be that they, it probably wouldn't change it that much, because it's going to be a very limited water supply, whereas like a town or a city, I'm sorry, would have, you know, millions of gallons of water in reserve with, that's pressurized versus a sprinkler system that's probably going to be, you know, maybe 5,000 or 10,000 gallons there to probably slow the fire, but not stop it. Okay, so the...
I was just saying, I would go with the average, you know, I think it would.
I have to agree with that. I think average grade is the, is the best fix at this point.
Well, we'll approach the fire chief and the building inspector with some revised language of the average elevation and see if we can get concurrence with them. Okay.
If possible compromise, 6 feet from the foundation, a slope could be a foot down. Thus, you may want to compromise and go to 35. So, just an option for you all going forward.
Okay. We'll bring that up.
Do you want me to find additional towns besides Conway and Newcastle, or do you have something in mind with one of them? Is a memo from the fire chief proposed some language, and these, these two have obviously been... So I just, do you want to point something, or do you have something in mind?
Well, I know Ian had, we'd have to just check with Ian, because he did some research, and I'm not sure which towns he may have excluded. I don't want to have you spend your time doing that.
Yeah, I imagine this is like a best of, or like a, or here, here are two very big options.
Yeah. So let's hold off on that for you to have to do that, and we'll check back with this one, with Ian.
Okay.
He did mention Portsmouth specifically having diagrams that were really helpful, so I don't know if that, you know, something to pull up. I know Portsmouth also mentioned, you know, MAC stories, and I don't think that's not anything we want to get into at this time.
Yeah, we're not Portsmouth.
Under 2D Conway, second sentence or line to the man gable, I believe that might be main gable.
Yeah, it looks like.
Those are the hardest kite posts to pick up, because a spell check doesn't catch them.
Okay, let's move on to the next one then, if we, if there's no other comments about that. So steep slopes. You want to take that, Ed, too?
Yeah, so that's something we, we've looked at for a few years now, but we, again, we held off on a lot of these because we had other housekeeping to do. We had a, we updated the entire zoning ordinance, and we updated the entire site plan and the subdivision regulations over the last number of years to get them all to kind of conform to each other and read more like each other. So steep slopes was one of those ones that has come up. Most of the towns, or a lot of the towns around us have protections for steep slopes in some way, shape, or form. We're seeing more and more applications come forward, you know, that are impacting steep slopes. I think the thought is that a lot of your kind of prime developable land, you know, has been developed, so now what you're going to be seeing a lot of is your marginal, marginal land and things that have, you know, steep slopes, ledge, wetlands, things of that nature. So it's trying to decide how to move forward with that. And we did have some draft language created for us a few, a couple of years ago, which is the copy that you, you all might have picked up from the desk up here.
Yeah, planner that we had hired back in, yeah, a few years ago.
Yeah, eight or 10 years ago, probably.
Yeah, probably. Helped us draft this language, and the, all of the items here are just things that the planning board is considering for zoning amendments. You know, we have to kind of whittle these through and decide which ones we're actually going to push forward, but these are, came to the top of the list of priorities. And in some cases, we had other things that were a little bit, in other years, we've had other elements of, that we wanted to get across that we didn't want to overburden people going through at polling times, voting times, to try and get all the way through all of this stuff, when we had some more higher priority things we wanted to have them focus on. So this would be an overlay district itself.
I see you have like 15% slope, is that what you're considering, steep?
In this case, we have that once it's greater than 15%, it would be within, it would fall within this overlay district, yeah.
Well, up to 15, I mean, yeah, 15, I mean, that's not very steep, really.
No.
15 feet and 100, that's not, I mean, Gary lived on a, he lived on a slope.
Used to.
Yeah, he used to. You're wised up.
It's a steep slope, actually.
And maybe that, you remember either you, or Charlene, maybe you were here at the time, why we picked 15%? Or was it just...
It had to do with the fire trucks as well, with the fire trucks before they brought them out.
So we use that for, for driveways and site access. I believe part of the reason 15 is used, I think that conforms with a lot of the metrics that other towns use, and then I believe the... use, and then, um, I believe the, uh, the, the maps, USGS maps and things like that, I think that's one of the, the common intervals, is 15% is considered steep. And those lands are generally identified as areas that are more sensitive to, um, things like erosion and runoff and things like that, once disturbed.
Well, Charlie mentioned fire apparatus, but also oil delivery, other-
Yeah, this, but this isn't just driveways, this is a slope in a, in the yard, slope, slope of the land.
I mean, these same fire trucks are going up Route 156, I mean, some pretty steep slopes on that hill, they make it. But I mean, you only need 50, with the fire truck, I mean, the first, once the fire truck's on the 15-foot slope, you keep right on going, I mean, it's that first length of the fire truck that you need to-
Change the slope.
Right, so they don't bottom out, but that's about it. Because you used to have like 20, you used to exclude 25% right off your, as part of a lot, or, and now I see you're doing like 15% in the slope, or in the zone, right?
I, I mean, I recall from when, when I was on the planning board as well, that had something to do with the fire trucks. There was a reason for it because of the fire, the fire trucks. It would, like Dirk said, that was really-
Also-
More so the driveway.
Yeah, delivery trucks too, like for oil delivery, and things like that.
And usually, so again, so part of this too is, when you encounter the slopes, like what we're seeing on a few recent cases, is, or you can see it in other areas, you know, that, yes, the driveway may, or the site access may impact this area of steep slope for a certain amount, but they actually, the impact is usually much, much, much larger, so to get a, and we, we've accounted for the driveways, um, you know, as to what their slope can be for the site access, but you usually see a much larger footprint get created. Instead of having, you know, 10 or 12 feet of clearing, it's, you know, 50 feet or more, because you have to get, you have to grade down the slopes, back down on the side, side slopes to, uh, you know, two to one, or three to one. To, I think, looking at this, it was to protect, again, some of those environmentally sensitive areas.
Yeah, let me just read a couple of things here, if you haven't had an opportunity to, and the purpose is really to protect the streams, ponds, lakes, wetlands from erosion, runoff from stormwater, sedimentation caused by improper or excessive construction, land disturbance, preserving natural topography, vegetative cover, preserving Nottingham's scenic quality, permit those uses of land which can be harmonious, um, and safely located on steep slopes, ensure integrity of steep slopes, and ensure safe ingress and egress, so we're talking about fire trucks with that. Now, what we have in here is where it would be applied, and I didn't read this until now, but it's to apply to major subdivisions and new site plans. So, if somebody's coming in and citing their house, um, on a minor subdivision, then this is not, would not fall within this overlay district.
Right.
This is more a tool to help develop the land appropriately for, you know, any of the major subdivisions to try and stay away from those steep slopes, from developing those, and then site plans to utilizing, you know, more flatter areas. So, this is not a, applies to all.
Yeah, that's a great, great point, a great reminder.
What's, what is your size of the major, what do you call major development, 10 to 15 ounces, what?
It's more than six.
You think it's more than six?
It's more than three.
More than three?
I was going to say four lots.
Four.
Four.
Four, four, three.
Not all that major, right? Although that's the, our definition, town's definition.
The town's definition, I get, yeah, I mean, I would look at it, but, okay, so we have, we have more consensus at four than any other number?
Yeah. And, and the intent of that was not to allow developers to come in and just maximize how many houses they could put on, if some of the sites were really not intended, would not be good for putting a house on. For the health of the thousands of people.
Because there would be, there are no other limitations in our ordinance currently, I mean, if it's not a wetland, if it's not above a 25% slope, I think that, is that one of our?
Yeah, you got a greater than 25.
Yeah.
But that, yeah.
Then there's-
In that same sentence, it says new site plan applications. What's your definition of that? Does major subdivisions and-
Set plan is commercial.
Commercial, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's two sets of regs, one for residential, one for commercial.
Wish we had some commercial, not again.
Well, it's common.
It's common.
We've been entertaining a couple of applications.
Good.
Okay, any other comments with this one, or? Okay, again, I think we'll, it'll ultimately come back to the planning board for whether we're going to include these, write them up as amendments, and, and move those forward into a public hearing process, which, again, could alter some of these, the language in the articles. Okay, let's, um-
I think the other, the other thing to mention, excuse me, was-
Yeah.
I think if I remember correctly, with this steep slope was also, you know, there were some examples where housing or development had happened where the steep slope is behind the house, and then it did not stabilize properly after the building process, that ended up washing down into somebody's basement, or their backyard, or their access from the back of the house, you know, I was thinking some stuff that was in reclaimed, um, you know, gravel pits and sand pits where their, their backup against a pretty steep area, and that actually, with heavy rains, flowed into the house, and just given the kind of weather patterns that were happening, I think, you should think about that chance for that kind of runoff, after you've built in a steep slope area, is increasing at all.
Yeah, I, I think we, and we do have language in our regulations about, you know, stormwater management, during construction periods, waiting for things to stabilize before you remove any of those erosion control measures. There is language in here, but I agree, we need to be a lot more diligent about that, that, you know, developers, or contractors, or homeowners, or whoever, if they're meeting those thresholds, that they're installing those things properly, and then waiting for it to become stabilized, and then remove any of the erosion controls. Yeah, that's it. More and more is happening with that, for sure. All right, I'll, I'll move on to the-
Protecting people from being stupid.
Land, the, the lot disturbance and landscaping. Ed, I turn to you again. I know you like these.
So, some of this, and this is one we're kind of have to go through, because I believe some of this was incorporated into the subdivision regulations, so this is kind of like more of like a best practices item, and to give the building inspector some kind of, you know, muscle to be able to, to work with developers and make sure that things are getting done correctly. So, some of it, like, you know, example, you know, topsoil when it's removed from the site, it should be kept on site and then put back, as opposed to, you know, taken out and, and then only have like an inch or so of topsoil, so you get a lawn that looks nice for a year, and then washes away, and the first rainstorm, um, and, and things like that, so. And also to provide vegetative buffers, and, and to identify when, you know, large areas are kind of disturbed, to make sure that, again, just best practices. So, for me, on this one, you know, I think a reread would be necessary for us, and to look and see where we've already incorporated this into the, some of these items into the, into our subdivision or zoning. And again, I think this was incorporated into subdivision regs, not, not into the zoning, so there's, this is, again, for new subdivisions, it wouldn't go to the current, current homeowners and such. And again, it's also, I'm sorry, new subdivisions in the residential agricultural district that are major subdivisions and site plan applications. So, again, not looking to, not looking to impact everyday homeowners, or those that are subdividing off a lot for their children, but it took them to kind of give major developers more of a, some guidance as to what we expect the final product to look like. In person, I've always hated this being called minimal lot disturbance, because realistically, it's maximal lot disturbance is what's being, uh, being discussed.
Oh, minimize lot disturbance.
Yes, I guess.
So, yeah, this one, you know, reads as if it fell right out of the master plan of protecting the health and safety of property, minimizing fragmentation of wildlife, protecting water quality, and promote land prac, land development practices that are responsive to the town's rural and scenic character. That's one, another article that we came up with, if there's any questions or comments on that one.
I just noticed that there are, there are quite a, there's quite a bit of detail as to, um, how to address certain areas that have been, are being disturbed in different ways, it gets into a lot of detail here.
Yeah, and I, I think specifically with these two, um, articles that we have, we, we also were planning on, the planning board is planning on having SRPC kind of do a one through on these, have them review them, kind of update them, as, you know, stated, they are a little bit outdated, they were written maybe, you know, eight years ago, maybe a little bit more, um, so we want to make sure it's with our current regulations. We have, it covered in other places and coordinate those.
And to follow what Gary says, I think, you know, there's a lot of good information here on stabilization and how to do that, and stuff, I think that would be useful.
Yeah.
So, it's always a balance when we write these, is to, I remember the, I think the dark sky is one that we had looked at once, you know, it was great, because it had all the measurements and how do you, how do you measure it, but it was, because of that, it was also very long, so people, I think, would get. You try to make a balance of, you know, having enough detail in there, so it's clear for everybody, but not so much detail that it becomes so cumbersome, and it's, you know, 10 pages just for this one section. So, it's trying to find, strike that balance.
I think a direction that we could think about is not having so much detail in the zoning ordinance, but just summarize it, and put the detail in the subdivision regs and in the site plan is for people to do, and make the subdivision's, because you don't want to follow this in the zoning ordinance.
That's a, that's a lot of these, you know, the 30,000 square feet of disturbance that, I mean, the state regulates a lot of, you have to get permit, right? On a certain size, so I mean-
Yeah, for a certain size.
They have a lot of regulations.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And most of the major subdivisions do trigger an alteration of train-
Right.
-permit through the DES. And that's who we usually rely on for permits, review, uh, but we also, on major permits, will, you know, hire an outside consultant to help with the technical reviews.
Um, just one, one note of interest, Steve, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of time, time factors in this. Uh, there's one, there's 1.5B, seven days for site stabilization, but the next one, revegetation, and it all depends really what you do, is, you know, how long do you give a homeowner to revegetate and plant grass and things like that? So, um, I'd be generous in that, but you don't want bare gravel for five years, for instance, you know, so-
Right.
So, there might be just some additions to that, that's-
That's a good point.
Yeah, I think the intent of this too is that most of the time, this would be being carried out by the developer, so, uh, targeting, you know, major subdivisions mostly, so it's, you know, those bigger, those bigger developments where it's going to be the developer that would be handling all that revegetation and such, so you, I think you're, you're right, though, having, we try to set timelines, uh, it's easier when they're in the ordinance, than us remembering to put, put a timeline on there. And usually, we're pretty generous, so it's, um, you know, a year, two years, something like that, or, or whatnot. But it's something, we do try to give leeway where it's, uh, like it mentions in there, within the appropriate growing season, so if they're planting, it doesn't make sense for them to try to revegetate in the middle of winter.
And honestly, some homeowners take two years just to build a house, and then another two years to get it looking halfway decent, so, you know, there's, there's some leeway there, but you don't want, like I say, bare gravel for-
You're right, because the only thing I, I just was kind of looking through to see if I could find anything, and the only thing I see here that says site stabilization, stabilization should occur on clear sites within seven day, calendar days of final grading, but how long does it take to get to that point?
Yeah. To me, it's more hay bales and, and, and preliminary site work, that you would stop erosion and things, but when do you plant grass?
Yeah. Okay, can I move on to five? Okay, so, the last one, but we probably have a little bit more to talk about after this one, is a driveway setback, um, and this is something that we've been, run into a couple of times, of how close a driveway is to a property line, and having a driveway right adjacent to the property line, and then somebody else might have, you know, a buffer or something that should be between a driveway and the property line, but currently, we don't have any driveway setbacks. So, that's-
With roadway too, I don't think, I think it should say driveway.
Yeah, and roadway too, yeah, we, we did have a subdivision a couple of years ago where, um, the developer wanted to, the owner was proposing a roadway along their property line, but their property line, you know, had, it was in a butter, who now would have a subdivision road with no setback to, um, to its, you know, property line, basically.
And the house was like 20 feet from what the driveway used to be sided.
Yeah, so it would have a new subdivision road within 20 feet of the side, what used to be the side yard. So, we were, uh, considering, you know, adding in a driveway setback. I don't remember that we have any, we had any recommendations?
I don't think so, I think we're looking at, you know, 10 or 20 feet, just to match the, uh, some of the others that we have, it wasn't to be necessarily excessive, or even put it within the, the billing envelope, um, let's try to give, yeah, some of that, some of that neighborly part to reduce conflict and all those other things, as well as to, maintain everything for the current residents. And also, if you're going to, you know, plow, snowblow, you really listed, you should have some kind of buffer on the side of your driveway to be able to avoid impacting the neighbor.
Right.
What was your recommended distance?
I don't think we had one, I don't think, I was saying, for a driveway, you know, off the top of my head, I would say 10 or 20 feet, you know, to, to match up with, um-
Setbacks that we currently have, the side setbacks, um-
So, how much did you say?
So, I was saying, you know, in my mind, it'd be 10 or 20 feet, probably-
10 or 20 feet, okay, yeah.
And again, we have common driveways, which are on the, you know, for shared driveways, which is two lots, you know, it'd be on the, that would be on the boundary, that'd be different, because it's a shared driveway, but for any other individual driveways, roadways, is try to avoid that, them being placed right on the, right on the lot line.
20 feet is a common zoning, it's either 50 or 20, so it's-
Yeah. And that's, we like that too, we like trying to be consistent with, when practical, you know, with other common numbers, so it's, you know, if they're dropping the, the surveyors dropping the 20-foot line anyway, you know, then it's, you got the, got it right there, it's not another, you have another line you have to put in.
Well, at least that, using, let's say, 20 feet, that would put, if you had the worst-case scenario, you could have two driveways, a driveway on each lot, and you would still be 40 feet away from each other.
And if one of those driveways was a house, already 20- And if one of those driveways was a house already 20 feet from, then.
You've got 40 feet. So that's what we're thinking about.
You, you were talking about that subdivision that came in and put the road 20 feet. I mean, that's pretty unusual because I mean, most people, they want to have lots on both sides of the road. So.
They could only get lots on one side.
Right. I was going to say it must've, they must've been pretty limited with that.
It was a, it was a fairly skinny lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the beginning.
I mean, that's pretty unusual.
Yep. But we couldn't do anything about it because we didn't have any regulation.
Right. Well, I don't.
Good.
It would have come to the ZBA probably.
Yeah.
More work for us.
Yeah.
So that rounds out the priorities of what the planning board has. Our list is longer than that, but we knew that this is a kind of a limited time that we can talk about all of these things. So that's about what the capacity of the planning board currently has to go through, to get into this cycle of amendments.
I'm a little bit surprised sound ordinance is not on your list.
I got it.
Just saying.
So with the limited amount of time we have before now and.
Mm-hmm.
And these amendments, there's, there were a couple of items that we've talked about in the past, ADUs, accessory dwelling units. Uh, I think we even did mention noise.
Tiny homes.
Tiny homes.
Fence boundaries.
Fence boundaries. So there are other things that we just, that, noise will be a bigger one to tackle. Uh, I'm not sure that we're set up to do that yet with, with our schedule.
No, I wouldn't be surprised to see that as a, the citizen warrant petition. You know, there's enough, there's enough noise ordinances out there in our state and other states, you know, for draft language. So I wouldn't be surprised to see that as a petition warrant article. But yeah, for us, for this board, I think at this time, we decided, based on our caseload, yeah, we're going to focus on, on these few things for this year.
Yep.
Are your topics beyond number five available to the zoning board?
Yeah. Just didn't put them on here.
It's more for information purposes from my point of view, but.
Yeah, we also tried to look at, uh, a couple of years ago, there was a lot of cases for, trying to remember what it was, zoning kept seeing a lot of one specific case and we ended up, um, amending the zoning ordinance to address it. And it, and it took a bunch of months off the agenda from that point on.
So.
And obviously the, uh, private roads, that's one other thing I meant to add for housekeeping, our appendices, uh, we'll probably have to add for housekeeping to amend. I think we have an appendix of town roads, private roads, emergency lanes. So we might have to fix that.
The listing of the roads?
Yeah.
That, that the town has.
But now that a lot of those were accepted, that was a lot of.
Has grown.
I think. I'm not going to speak. You guys actually see the cases, the, a lot of cases coming forward. The ZBA were just building permits that were on a private road.
Yeah.
Because now they're no longer.
I was curious how much of that would be included this year. And I've expected zero because it's not time yet, but.
Right.
Dirk, I do have a question. So Ed had mentioned, um, you know, probably that there might be a, a sound ordinance coming in as a petition warrant article. If, if that is a, that might just be an ordinance and not a zoning ordinance because it talks about the last day for petition zoning amendments. So as petition warrant article, that has to do with any type of zoning, just kind of like that. That probably has to come in as a petition warrant article earlier than some of the other petition warrant articles we've had. Yes, is that true?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that difference?
Yeah, the zoning petitions, uh, zoning amendments have to come in earlier because we have to hold public hearings.
Yep.
On them. So because of the public hearing schedule.
But if it's a petition warrant article, would, would there be, and would it be public hearings? It's a petition warrant.
Not for, not for petitioned because they get enough signatures and it's petitioned.
I'd have to reread the, I'd have to reread the RSA language on that to see what the process is. We haven't had one in the number of years I've been on here. So you're correct.
If it's a petition zoning amendment or zoning article, so it's zoning, then it needs to come in early than a regular petition warrant.
I believe that's correct. Yes. Sorry. So I'm thinking for clarification. I think I misspoke. Yes, for our intent purpose, which would be the zoning side, there's that language and dates set for zoning amendments that are petitioned. But there's also, correct, there's a, there's other petition articles that could be go through to the board selectman and the town and things like that.
I just want to know how that wording would be.
And I don't know if one becomes advisory and one becomes more a law. No idea.
So Mr. Bassett, back to your question, the other items that we went through, the planning board went through to look at for zoning changes, um, that we haven't mentioned yet would be the flood hazard areas. And that would mean just updating the FEMA maps because the last time that they were revised for the town that were accepted is 2005. So we want to just make sure that we have, um, the most up to date for FEMA maps included into the zoning. That's one of the items.
Do FEMA maps encompass anything over than, than just water? Like, uh, how close you are to a possible 100-year flood or whatever?
Yeah, it, it is up to, you know, the 100-year flood.
But is there other than water in a FEMA map? Or have you seen the map?
No, it would just be the limits of the flood areas, the flood zones.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, those have been pending for quite a while. Like, geez, I think those came out, they thought were here, come out like 2012, maybe. I remember going to UNH for the preliminary.
Who updates the FEMA maps besides FEMA?
Yeah. So, so there's community input. So they usually, they have a preliminary map. And so they do their, so like, for a lot of these, they've redid them with, um, build maps were from like the 60s and such that were, they explained it was like a sharpie kind of going along contour lines on a, on USGS maps. And then they, so they redid them with LiDAR. So at two-foot intervals or even smaller. So they got much more accurate data. So again, you know, big fat line versus a nice, nice line. So towns had a chance to review them, provide input. Um, and then they went back and geez, I don't know what the final process is for when we expect to see those.
Thank you.
I know, I know, you know, some of those maps, I mean, on Nottingham Lake, there's, there's people that are up, you know, 30 feet above the water and they have to go in for flood. You know, they have to hire a survey to clear up the flood because the map shows them in the flood zone, which, you know.
That's where I see it.
See to take any contour into.
That's where I see the most problems, you know, with people having to go get a, a loan with a letter of map amendment, um, is where it's really sloped and those contour lines are really, really close to each other. Uh, no, Three Ponds I can think of is no one where you see the terrace back there. It's a go down 40 feet to the water. It's damn controlled. There's no way the house is going to flood. But.
Right.
The bank sees it and they say, oh, there's a flood zone right there. Go, go get this.
Yeah.
Good for the survey.
Yeah.
So one of the ones, another one that we were looking at are the impact fees to clarify how they, they apply.
I think we clarified that. I think that was fixed. So there was some language in there about when they expire, um, if I remember correctly. There was one, one case or one request to waive some based on a subdivision that was approved two years prior. Um, I think the language it said it was like, you know, after five years after they're adopted, they're originally adopted or something like that. So we're well beyond that point. That's my memory of it. May not be accurate.
Uh, we were just briefly talking about restricting adult entertainment, bookstores, marijuana grow facilities, dispensary farms from certain zones and distances from schools and daycare. We don't see huge demand for that in Nottingham. So. So that was, that fell on the priority list.
And the way we've treated those of including specific things is that the way our zoning ordinance is now, it's been explained to me was that it's permissive. We, we say what's permitted and everything else is not permitted. So by putting certain things in there, it might change it. So it's easier to kind of say, these are what we allow. Everything else basically is blanketly not allowed. You know, good events.
Looking at additional Airbnb regulations, um, accessory structures, not on the lots without primary structures. What does that mean?
That was like the garages that, you know, you have a garage built on a lot. There's no actual home on the lot. So I think they were seeing that in surrounding towns and it becoming a problem for code enforcement with the car storage.
Having a structure without a home there.
Hmm.
Like a storage unit, using land for a storage unit.
I have one of them.
Hmm.
You see it commonly probably around lakes, but you know, you got the house on this side of the lot.
Well, I have, I have the A through.
You don't have to say anymore.
Am I curbingating myself? Anything you say will be used against you.
It will.
We're not doing anything with that at this point. Not looking at those. Tiny homes was mentioned before. Um, one thing about the tiny homes is that, or no, I'm sorry, that's the accessory dwelling units. The state is, uh, the state has requirements. So we can also default to the state for those accessory dwelling unit regulations. Just some clarification, some frontage, definition of frontage.
That was me, I think. I'm trying to, because right now we just say frontage and how it's, it's measured. But, um, I was bringing up, you know, we're seeing a lot more cul-de-sacs and things like that. So other towns measure a straight line distance for frontage or versus, you know, distance on an arc or, or frontage that, you know, say a lot that fronts two streets, you know, can you add, can you add those two numbers together? Or is it, you know, frontage on one street and things like that? So I was trying to look at possibly clarifying that, but that's for future date.
Uh, we mentioned the fence. So I know the building inspector has had some issues with where a fence would go on the property line. How does it get installed? Well, if it's on the property line, then they're going to dig somewhat on someone else's property. At this point, he is recommending maybe it be setback a foot from the property line if someone's going to install a fence.
Yeah, there's two things that, A, if you're on the property line, then technically you're trespassing to maintain your own fence if you're going the other side of it. And then, uh, the second part was some problems with them being installed around the property line causing sightline issues on certain roads.
So we aren't going to go through that. And then we do have this noise ordinance. So we did, we have talked about a noise ordinance at our, some of our past meetings, um, with complaints, time of day, uh, special events. Uh, we did just pass the, um, Water Cross event site plan that was, uh, was approved at our last meeting. Um, in that, some of the discussions with the police department in talking about noise ordinance is that how does that get measured? They do not have any equipment that measures it. Who's going to say it's at a certain decibel level? What picks that decibel level? There's a lot of things that go into this noise ordinance potentially that our board just, our board doesn't have time to, to go into that right now.
It needs a lot of research and consideration.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of things. I mean, you have, don't have leaves, you have leaves, you have wind, you don't have wind, you have, you know, I mean, there's, yeah, the sound can, I mean, I live by the racetrack and sometimes I don't even, I don't even realize the racetrack is running. It's that quiet. And other nights, you know, it's just like it's in my own backyard. But I mean, I mean, it's just the weather. It's the, it's just, you know, sound carries.
I hear it in my house sometimes.
Yeah.
We carry it in our house and we're across the town.
Sometimes I can hear the dragway even. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a long ways away.
But in the state of New Hampshire, if a dog barks for 30 minutes, you can call the cops. Yep.
If you can prove.
State law.
How about gunfire?
Nothing about that.
There's actually, there's actually.
A dog barking for 30 minutes, you can call the cops.
There must be a reason. Bless you here gunfire.
Some legislator wrote the law.
Tax caps are maintained by the board of selectmen?
The what?
Yeah, under their assessing duties, I believe. Under their assessing duties, I believe that was, uh, one of the things they, when the assessing, um, board assessing, ah, was dissolved, I believe the board of selectmen absorbed that responsibility. There's five of them now.
Okay. That was just a curiosity question.
I guess, are there things that the ZBA is seeing?
Yeah, well, you guys.
Issues or?
You guys did away with the, you know, you, you had that 50-foot setback from the septic there for a while and that, that was tough. Then you went down to 20. Wouldn't, it wouldn't be bad if you would go down to 10 for the non-conforming lots. In some ways, you know, keep it 20 for the two-acre lots. But 10 wouldn't hurt because, you know, I mean, we've, we've give some variances down like six feet, you know, from the lot line on, on the lake on Pawtucket, you know, they're very tight. That, that would be good if you could go back just down to 10 on the non-conforming for the septic would be helpful.
How many of those years do you have to do though?
We get quite a few. We haven't had as many lately. I mean, because they reduced the 50, but, you know, we get.
I think, I, I used to say that because the lake has, has an issue that should be.
Well, I'm just saying, no, but most people, most people are trying, on the lake are trying to move away from the lake. So they're moving up, you know, so the 10 feet would give them 10 feet further away from the lake than 20 feet. So.
I think.
Cause everybody's trying to move up to the back of the lot. So.
Well, Terry, you're saying on non-conforming lots, right? Is what you.
Existing non-conforming.
Almost everything at the lake is non-conforming.
Yeah, non-conforming, yeah.
So the one way it'd be a much bigger overhaul would be, you know, again, I think a lot of like zoning cases probably come from, from things around the lake because there were smaller lots pre-zoning. Um, so I think, you know, creating, you could potentially create a separate zoning district for, to incorporate those lots to, again, identify we know, we know they're there and they are where they are, um, and to try and make it clearer. But again, that would be a pretty major probably.
Chair recognizes Mr. Warren.
Thanks. Uh, isn't the state regulation 10 feet?
10 feet. Yeah, the state is 10 feet.
The state says 10. I mean, that should be the minimum. I mean, I don't know why it was wrong. If they need to go less than that.
We would back and forth on that. I forget what the reasoning was on that.
I mean, again, 10 for the non-conforming. I don't mind 20 for the bigger lots, I think fine. But 10 for non-conforming is because that's state regulation. Just leave it at that. That's how, my opinion.
Right. Cause on the lake, everybody's trying to push back from the lake. You know, they're all trying to get.
75 feet.
Right. They're all trying to get, they're all trying to get back as far as they can. So.
But I mean, how many, you know, how many of those now have been developed? They've had, they've had, they've had the zoning variances done. They've had the septic systems put in or they need to update. But I mean, rather than change that, let them come in for zoning variance on it and you're going to rank it anyway because of the situation for that. So.
Right. But it's, but it's.
You run out of lots to develop that are non-conforming anyhow.
You know, somebody has a failed system or something, you know, you got to delay it and, you know, so it's just, they got to come in for a variance. It costs them money. I mean, you know.
And I think one of.
You say leave it at 20 and let them come in for variance for less than that.
One other item.
I mean, that's what it is now.
Well, nothing's going to happen this year anyways. No, no.
One other item that Mr. McKinnon had pointed out was, um, the language of our setbacks, the way they're defined, that, you know, maybe worthwhile to, uh, look at how they're defined or add some clarifying language about either property lines, um, or edge limit of public rights away. So it's going to kind of come up where, you know, where do you measure a setback from, especially with a lot of the roads that were just adopted? You know, is it the center line of the road, which may be where the property line had been? Um, or is it actually where the edge of the road? Cause I think people consider it generally to be the edge of the roadway.
Yeah, that's for specifically the roads the town just took over. That, that's.
Yeah.
And still to be determined.
Or, and it covers, yeah, easements as well. So, yeah.
Any other items?
Can I just ask a question back? Cause I couldn't hear everything about the tiny homes issue. Is that something that's not being addressed now? Because I couldn't hear everything about the tiny homes issue, is that something that's not being addressed now, or you're just?
It's not being addressed for this year.
Okay.
I understand that the state has been looking, I understand that the state's been kicking around in legislature and committees to try to figure out how they wanna define it, so they were waiting for some guidance from the state on it and stuff.
Wait and see what they say before.
Kind of like they did with ADUs, so they, they came up with legislation about ADUs, so then towns, you know, conformed around that, and it was easier to, you know, sort of rewriting it.
A lot of the tiny homes now, not a lot, but there are some that are just on a trailer, and they're, could be homemade, they could be manufacturer-made, or they could be on a foundation, and they could be, so there's a lot of variables to them, and trying to wait till kind of the state lands on some guidance on it.
Yeah, and right now, nothing in our, got, mentioned a size of a house on a lot, but if it, so it goes back to, that'd go back to code and building permits. So if it's on, in my opinion, if it's on a foundation and it's permanent structure and it could be taxed as a home, then it's, then that's a home.
It seems like there was something.
If it's on a trailer, then it's a, you know, temporary structure and, you know, it gets regularly.
Dirk, do you want to ask for input from the commission?
Yes, please. Love to have, I'd love to have input from the Conservation Commission.
There are a couple things that we were thinking about, the, the lighting regs probably need to be updated, just because of the new technologies and stuff that's out there with, with new, you know, light shielding and things like that. So it's not necessarily, you know, rewriting them, but just kind of updating them to what the new technologies are out there for lighting, which would end up, you know, having a lot less light, light pollution. I think, I don't know if many of the members of the board are on the board now, that a few years back, it was, three or four years ago.
Dark, the dark sky friendly presentation, yeah.
Presentation, right, that was done with one of the students that was studying that from the state, so.
Yeah, yeah, might be sun, sun.
Yep.
Yeah.
I've forgotten the name of the cars, I couldn't think of the person's name. And a lot of good information came out of that, and there's a lot of that technology that's being implemented or changed. Various, you know, parking lots and things like that where that lighting is getting changed, so that may need to be updated. And then just.
Would you say they update that just with municipalities and businesses or for residents?
Both. Okay. Both. You get a lot of light pollution even out of residences, I mean, you know, the landscape uplighting does a tremendous amount of light pollution depending upon the water to that. There's ways to do that without having that much upward light pollution.
And there's so many controls now for lighting with the LED technology that you can have them, you know, the temperature of them, you know, it could be a really bright white, or it could be a soft antique type white.
They can them down, you know.
And there's a, and just, just even in terms of how it's angled or something like that, I mean, there's, there's just tons of research in, indicating how much impact that can have on migratory birds, et cetera, et cetera, in terms of the light, light pollution that that does and how that affects bird migration, particularly, obviously, birds that migrate at night, but, and also just light pollution for neighbors, et cetera. And then Aquifer Protection District in terms of salt usage over our aquifer areas, and possibly even on river crossings, I know there's been a couple times where we've seen big dumps of salt over bridges and stuff, and yes, they do get slippery, but that's also, that's our drinking water, so, you know, different from being in downtown Boston or something like that, but it's, it's our drinking water. So, I mean, the town's done a great job in trying to reduce the amount of salt that they're using and mixing the sand with it, et cetera. And we don't have the equipment necessary to do the brine applications, it's too expensive, we've been through that a lot of times with the Board of Selectmen. So the town isn't capable to do that, but, but, you know, the granular salt that we're using, mixes that we're using. Think about moving forward to have aquifer protection areas for salt uses or reduce salt uses. I mean, you see those all in lots of different towns in terms of reduced salt area for mixing water district or whatever. So those are, those are two thoughts.
Okay, great, now I know with the salt usage, the state plows or spreaders went to a, kind of an automated system where it regulates how much comes out versus just open the chute and it just goes everywhere. So they, they are controlling it a lot better, at least at the state level, and hopefully now that, you know, at a municipal level, it'll catch up and start doing that.
Well, I think, what does, isn't our most recent salt truck have that capability?
I don't, I have no idea.
Yeah, I think so.
There's also for private contractors, I think it's through UNH or the Cooperative Extension, there's the NOPRO certification. And for private contractors, there's actually an added benefit of that where the state, if you've taken a certification course, jumps in for liability coverage, so if you have a claim, because, you know, they say you didn't plow, didn't put down enough salt for the application, but you've been through that, there's a possibility for the state fund to kick in.
Yeah, and I believe, I mean, the town, the applicators from town, a number of them have gone through that program.
Any other ones?
I'd like to go back to the lighting ordinance just a second, because I've noticed, and I, I haven't looked at the ordinance specifically to see what it says, but I've noticed several times as I'm driving along the highway that lights shine out onto the road directly into the cars.
Like from houses?
No, from commercial ventures. You know, they put signs on their, they put lights on their signs, but the light goes beyond that sign and extends out into the highway. And several times I've been literally blinded by driving down the highway, and all of a sudden, there's this light that's coming through a, you know, from a spotlight, past the sign, out onto the road. And I don't know if there's any way of creating any ordinance about that, but I've found it really, I think it's really dangerous.
Yeah, we do, I think that was part of the language, was the spill beyond the property line, was some of the draft.
Because I think one of them is, was that business right outside Route Four where, kind of, it comes out on Route Four.
It's the welding company.
I remember what it used to be, but I don't remember what it is now, but that sign there was a, was a major issue.
Yeah, that, that was an issue that the Planning Board never addressed when that was.
No, the code enforcement officer never addressed it.
Well, Planning Board did not.
The code enforcement officer never addressed it, and hasn't ever been for a while, yeah.
Because that lighting was installed post our lighting ordinance, so technically it is illegal, because it's an uplight, and that was installed after the town prohibited uplights on commercial signage.
Just remember that it was a big issue for me when I was driving.
Sneak by there.
And there's a couple of other places on Route Four. And I don't know what the ordinance can say about it, but.
An apology, just have to run, let's get my, my monstrosity to bed.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody.
I think we're almost done. If anyone else has more items, but I do appreciate everybody coming and spending a little bit of time.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second. So moved, right?
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dirk.
Thank you.